...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consul, we have the minutes of work session of February 20th, 2018. Any corrections? I have a motion for acceptance by Rhodes, seconded by Mizek. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Mike Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And you also have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 20th, 2018. Any corrections, changes, or errors? I have a motion for acceptance by Fluharty, seconded by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And no presentations tonight. Did make a presentation last Saturday to my mom for her 90th birthday, so I just want to mention that. We had a real nice party for her. Partied all weekend, too. Anyhow, old business. Ordinance number 9561-18.
Mending ordinance number 9366-16 pertaining to section 1105.04 entitled Recreation Program Registration Fees of our Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
And we have motion for suspension by Rhodes, seconded by Saunders. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Yes.
A motion for third and final by Spinks, seconded by Janudis. Mike?
Thank you, Mary. What we're doing is by adjusting this ordinance and as we look to increase the types of programming and types of activities that we offer through the Recreation Department, we want to be able to work with Recreation Director, myself, and the Finance Director to go ahead and set various fees on some of the unique programs that we're looking to do. For instance, if we want to bring in a woodworker to do a woodworking class, that's a contractor. Knowing what he charges, we can then turn around and offer a fee to where it is going to be a wash for the city. This is not by any means us making any adjustments to our regular scheduled programming. We're not adjusting any of the fees for the pool, for the baseball soccer, any of those items. This just merely gives us the ability to work with some of these independent contractors. As they come in, we like to offer new types of program. Like I said, not to say we're doing woodworking, maybe it's self-defense, anything of that nature. We can work with them based on their fees and set our own to make sure it's solvent for the city.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9564-18.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year contract for credit card payment service with Anovia Payments LLC and Americh Bank Corporation to complement the E-Track software registration process and declaring an emergency.
We have a motion for suspension by Fluharty, seconded by Janudis. I call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizek, seconded by Rhodes. Mike, you want to take this and the next one?
Sure. Actually, I'll talk about this E-Track, the second ordinance, first. E-Track is a new software that we're going to be implementing with the Recreation Department. Our current software is actually expiring. We spend about $4,000 a year on that software. What we've done is we've looked at multiple other cities, we've done the analysis, a similar municipality who uses E-Track, Shaker Heights, nothing but positive feedback. And what we're looking to do is implement that for our software. It's all web-based. We will actually own all the content. It's cheaper. It's about $400 to $500 cheaper than what we've been paying for our current software. Again, it's a five-year contract. The good part about this new software that we're implementing is, now going to the first ordinance, Anovia is actually the bank, if you would say, that will handle all of the transactions and the ability to do online registration. You know, it establishes, you go in there, it's very secure, similar to a program we offer to the Tax Department where you can go pay the taxes. People will now be able to go on and register for baseball, softball, any types of those programs. They can do all of that through this software. Anovia, again, is a banking agency. We sat down, participated in a conference call with Frank in our Finance Department to make sure everything is compliant, and they will handle all of our PCI compliance and all of that. So I think this is important, to get this initiated as we get closer to our busy season, and again, offer more of a convenience for our residents as far as registration goes.
Thank you. Question? Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Will this include being able to use a credit card for the, well, I'd say daycare facility during the summer for the residents at Ellenwood, or is it just for program things?
No, we can't. Yep.
Okay. Because that's by the big complaint, people can't come up with the money right away. All right, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9565-18.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year contract for the recreation software you just explained with St. Andrews Parks and Playground doing business as E-Track and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Mizek, seconded by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, seconded by Janudis. Mike just explained all that. Any other question? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And reports, Mr. Melas.
Thank you, Mary. Unfortunately, over the last couple of days, throughout the weekend, and even this morning, we've been experiencing a handful of water main breaks. I just want to urge everybody, you know, if you see water bubbling up, if you see, and crews aren't out there, if you see drops in water pressure or anything like that, you know, make a call, get in touch with us. Most likely, our officers have received phone calls and were in the process of getting our crews out there, but please, if you notice that, definitely contact us. I do want to mention that once we do get water main breaks, you know, depending on the location, how long the water's been isolated, you know, is there a boil alert advisory? Is there not? I can tell you that if you do have a boil advisory, we will always hang a card, and we will always notify the properties in question. Okay? If you don't have that on your door or on your front door, you were not affected. So that's just something to, just something to keep in mind. When that does happen, we're forced to, we take a water sample after the repair is made, and we do submit that to make sure the water quality and all of that is where it needs to be. So any of those times, if you still see a pressure, that the pressure's low, as we talked about today, you know, we don't turn some of those valves on until we get that report back that it is good. So sometimes there's a delay, and I, you know, we apologize for that, but you know, our guys, they try to go as quickly as possible to get those breaks fixed. So just adds up if you see those, that water bubbling up. I do want to mention, everyone, visit our website, and just a friendly reminder of the calendar, we have more meetings coming up. Please attend those, they're going to be very informative. We'll also have all of our department ads here, you know, we have some new faces, and I think it's a great opportunity for everyone to get to know them. And obviously, these meetings are for you, the public. So if you have questions, bring those to us. And again, those will start later in March. Question came up regarding a sinkhole on Center Road. We did have the crews go out there, they checked that hole. We had not been out there to work, and we actually had the Water Department go out, we sounded that area, and there is not a break. So we did notify Dominion East Ohio from the work that they've performed, and they are to be out there to inspect that and to see what might be happening underground and why it's causing that. So we'll try to have something hopefully addressed soon, but again, it's not from us, and we almost...
...straight pain, so nobody would fall into a telephone bus.
Okay. All right. Well, Dominion should be out, or their contractor, I should say, so we did follow up with them. We sent again notice to the Calhoun County Director of Public Works regarding the condition of some of the county roadways, especially Solon Road and Union Street. Ironically, we did get their year-end report listing all of the work they've done and projects they did for the city of Bedford, and it's comical, all the blank pages, and I'll share that with consul in this week's memo. So we'll see that. Regarding the recycling grant, we talk about recycling and trying to increase that public awareness. We did apply for a grant once again, and I want to commend Jennifer, who works in the Development Department, as well as Annie, our receptionist. We did get the award, as I indicated to consul, and it's going to cover the cost of the additional two shred days, as we've been doing, that have been a very big hit, that feedback we've heard from the county, or, I'm sorry, from our residents. But also, what we're going to be doing is, we've designed magnets that we're going to make available to the public. We have additional information that's going to be going in various water bills. We are going to be designing a small calendar geared on recycling and offering tips on recycling, what you can and cannot do, and we're really trying to promote that public awareness. So all of that will be funded through this grant, so look for that information that'll be coming out in water bills, as well as for those shred days. Those dates have yet to be set, but they should be shortly. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Montello?
I have no report tonight, thank you, Mary.
Mr. Gamble, let me just say, your assistant did a very good job. Last meeting, filling in for you.
Very good.
A reminder, she said two words, no report.
That just so happens, I have two so...
That's no, no hint, but...
Two quick comments. One, seriously, in business withholding, most of the businesses got it right in regards to how to withhold this year. It was the paid dates after January 1st, even though it went affect January 1st, it's the paid dates afterwards. So your W2s at the end of the year have to reflect that 3% was taken out of your pay for businesses that are in the city of Bedford. So as a reminder to our businesses, I will have a letter going out to businesses to remind them, most complied with properly, some found out later through their accounts that it was done incorrectly and corrected that situation by going back to the employees and getting that withholding back, but others may have not at this point. So I will send a letter out to remind them of that. The other part was our website, where we were doing online earlier this year, we did a really early return, and we're really on top of things. Our system was a little bit behind, it was picking up 16 information, so it was kicking out the amounts you withheld in 16 versus 17. So we corrected that situation, and it is now reflecting in proper amounts. However, that software is getting old, it's 15 years old now, and you know, it's starting to show its age, too. So we may have to be looking at another system in the future for software for that program, but it's done very well over the years. Those are my two issues I've done in the entire report.
Thank you. Consul, Mrs. Rhodes?
First of all, I wanted to say again, we have stakeholders for Main Street, we are looking for those. If you're not familiar with the Main Street program, you can go to BedfordWard5.com and watch a video concerning the implementation, hopefully, of Main Street program. Stakeholders would help us get that program off the street, or off the ground. If you're interested, please contact myself or Laura Hewlett. Second of all, which I know there are several people here waiting for this, last week, or last meeting, I said that, stated my reasons for writing an article in the Liberty News. And I had had several people, day to death, who'd gotten up and spoken, I had several people beyond that contact me during the course of the week following regarding that. And I have decided that those people have a point, and that I will no longer be considering my article in the Liberty News. Out of this, I'm happy to say, Mr. and Mrs. Neff have happily agreed to try to get a new paper started in Bedford. They are taking that over, and they are looking for writers. If you're interested in writing for the Bedford Tribune, please contact them, or you can contact me, and I can give you their contact information. I just also want to point out that getting up at the podium and contacting your council person can change their mind sometimes, so I do encourage everyone to do that if you have a problem with Bedford City. If you are a senior, I did state before that the reason I wrote with Liberty News was because of the fact that my seniors needed to know about what was going on in Bedford. They don't have that information, they don't have an internet connection often. So if you are a senior, and you do still want to get updates on what's happening in Bedford, please contact me. I am more than happy to send out a paper copy of what I write on the web to anywhere in the city. You don't even have to be in my ward, so. Beyond that, if you would like to get updates from me through the internets, through email, you can find information at BedfordWard5, the number five, dot com. You can sign up for a newsletter there, or you can just visit the web and see the updates on the whole page. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Yeah, there are also another way, too. I used to also write in the Liberty News, and due to the same fact that you no longer, I decided not to, but every second and fourth month, the seniors meet. They were meeting the other meeting at the Church Nazarene in their hall, and I went last week, and it was really nice there. Thank you to everybody involved at Church Nazarene for making that space available. But Mary always allows me to get up, and I go to the meetings and kind of fill in, the seniors are there, because there's seniors from everybody's ward here is at those meetings. So that's a good way, too, of giving up and filling the ones that can't come, and there's somebody in that don't read Liberty News, that, so it's right around the corner from your house, if you get a chance, it's a great event as well. March 26th, Ward 1 and Ward 4 will be me and Paula, it's going to be, it's going to be the Sandy and Paula Show. Ward meeting at 7 o'clock here. Saturday night, very late, I received a phone call from my youngest son that was here a couple of weeks ago, celebrating my birthday, he's my son, a police officer, and it always scares me, but I get a call from my son late at night, because he goes to bed very, very early, because he works, gets up about 3:00 in the morning. And he gives me a call and tells me, "Sit down and don't put me on speakerphone," so that two things right there scares me. He was telling me that he received a call from dispatch, wanting him to go outside his jurisdiction. My son is also a paramedic. When he was going through the police academy, he was going to be a state trooper, and that's one of their qualifications, because a lot of times, wrecks, fatalities that happen on the interstate there in Texas, it's 45 minutes to an hour and a half for an ambulance to get there, so a lot of those state troopers are paramedics as well. So my son is also a paramedic, so they called him to come in on a railroad there, had been a driver that had been ejected from a vehicle, was on the phone, was without a seatbelt. And so when my son arrived, he, what he thought was a DOA, because that's what the dispatch was, got his equipment, and the passenger, the driver had been, it was just one person in the car, had been thrown out, and my son got to him with his equipment and realized it was his father. My ex-husband was not wearing a seatbelt and was on the phone. My son was able to stabilize his father, and they airlifted him to Trauma Unit in Texas, and he's underwent, like, three surgeries, he had his spleen removed, a lot of his intestines removed, his skull plate removed. They had to go back in several times, he's had several internal injuries, and is in intensive care, fighting for his life right now. Very, very proud of my son, for all of his, I'm proud of both my sons, but I'm very proud of my son that's a paramedic and a police officer, because I can't imagine what went in my child's mind when he gets down there and realizes it's his father, and didn't hesitate and saved his dad's life. So I'm very proud of that. I'm asking for prayers from both of my sons and my ex-sister-in-laws who are still, they're your friends, and they've come in, there are kids from all over the place, so the family is in, and he's, they're keeping him in induced coma, and so just, please don't text and drive, please wear your seatbelt, buckle up all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizek?
Thank you. Sandy, I'm first, definitely with you, you know that, and I, you already said it, but yes, March 26th, we're the first two up for the board meetings, and I think it's going to be a nice night, and we're going to do the best we can, Sandy and I, because we've teamed up before and did a pretty good job. Excuse me. Oh, okay, thank you, sir. As far as the senior meeting, you answered that question, too, I was going to ask Mary and Mike, because the phone calls were starting to come in, where do we go? You know, I can't answer that. And also, I got a call today, too, in regards to Ellenwood. The railroad group meets on Monday night, and they asked where they possibly could go, so I referred them to Michelle, because possibly they'd come here, or use their caucus room, or he said he was going to call over at the historical society, and I told him, it's, you know, it was his choice, but I, they inquire, so I pass it to Michelle. The other thing was, when you mentioned the water main breaks, and you said that people see some, or they don't have pressure, well, Heather had her first enlightening Saturday weekend with the citizens, and she did a great job, but the old phone number of 232-7600 has to be discarded completely. When somebody calls us, we have to refer them to, and if everybody wants to make a call, to the dispatch or to our, it's a private, not private line, but it's the, not emergency line, it's the 232-1234 number. That's the only number you got to call, push for oh for the attendance, attendant, attendant at that phone, and tell them what's going on. I don't know if the police were not aware of this. I might, got notified credit early that morning. The officers or whoever dealt with the calls that did come in, kind of said everybody would have to wait till Monday, but fortunately, we were all spared, and those guys came out right away on Saturday, and we did appreciate what they did, but, and they thought they did everything at the right time. Unfortunately, they had to call back over to another street in the same area for the same problem, and I know they did a good job at that, and I want to say thank you for all the great work. And lastly, I was going to say, about a month and a half ago, in our follow-up letters and contacts from your, your weekly memo, you mentioned a bunch of, there was a letter from Lieutenant Kellerman about posting up the outages of the streetlights. I noticed CEI came around and started fixing them, but they missed half of them. Are they going to come back out?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we submitted that...
Push energy, that's the same thing.
We did submit that, and obviously, that, you know, sometimes they don't come up for months, but it's sporadic, but I still urge everybody to, you know, we worked to compile that list, so if you see a streetlight that's out, you know, if you're walking, it would be a tremendous help if you, on every pole, there's actually some numbers, jot those numbers down, take a picture with your phone, text it to us or email it to us, we can give them the specific pole number. If you don't get that, or if you can't, that's not a problem, what we do is we send the officers out and we'll check, or we'll go out and check in the evening and get that pole number. We send all of that over, and that gets to CEI, and they'll get to it as quickly as possible. It's important for that, because regardless if that light's on or off, we get a bill for it. And so if they're off, let us know, because we're paying no matter what, which is, you know, frustrating, you see Frank's expression on his face.
And if you don't want to call it in yourself, call one of us, we'll be happy to do it for you. I can tell you exactly what kind of number, you can find it on the more or less galvanized piece of metal on the center of the pole, about 20 feet up from your head if you're looking up. Because I have one down by me that I actually called Mike, and since I'm walking around this pole, and I'm looking, and I says, "I can't be like the squirrel in Baltimore," you never make it, so they had, I had to give them the specific address of the home, so they can do it like that. But like, a little bit of help goes a long way, especially when we have to get numbers, and we'd like to have enough light around our neighborhood so we don't have problems. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Janudis?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty?
Thank you. Yes, I had a call from one of my residents out about a week or so ago, and found out that somebody's been dumping some garbage behind the apartments, buildings off Union Street and behind Sunoco, where they're by those apartments, Dale Parks, I think they called. I called Mike right away, and Mike came out, and thank you, Mike, you helped out a lot, and we took some pictures of it and everything, and brought out a service, one of the service directors, or service department workers, and we found a lot of tires down there, and garbage cans full of just plain pure garbage, you name it, tackle boxes, kid stuff, and so Mike went, found out who, who, who'd be responsible for this, and he sent out letters to these people, and we'll find out in what, 30 days to clean up the mess. If they don't do that, then what we're going to do it ourselves and then charge them?
Yeah, what we, what we'll most likely do is we'll probably contract with a company to come in and do that, and then what we do is we'll assess all of the property owners' the cost of that.
Cost of it.
Yeah. I mean, we could possibly do it, but before we commit to sending the, I mean, given the amount of trash that's down there, it'll take quite a number of people, so we may just look at contracting that up, and it is 30 days.
Yeah, and who knows how long this has been going on, but it's just, we don't need any extra garbage laying around, that's for sure, especially where there's a big area where they're just dumping it at will. There's probably at least 30, 40 tires down there, if not more. So anyhow, Mike took care of it, we're getting on, we're on it, and hopefully, we'll get this all, this all by spring here, and I'm sure the people that are around there will be glad to see all this gone. And also, I come up Broadway, Mike, when they're doing all that digging up there for the convent area, there's a ton of mud coming out on Broadway, and there's people complaining about that, because it's just, they need to clean it somehow up.
We, and I agree with you, we went up there early last week, we sent someone from the Building Department up there, and we told them that they're going to need to bring in a street sweeper and make sure Broadway is cleaned, because that, that condition wasn't acceptable. So we told them that. What we did tell them, that if they don't do that, and we have to do that, they'll be billed for it. But we were aware of that, we did send someone out, and I'll make sure we follow up with that.
Okay, good. Let's get the report. Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
And by the way, Broadway Hill today was horrendous, so it was still covered in blood, it was unbelievable. Anyway, since the streetlights were brought up, the Northfield Road Bridge has had a third of its lights out, almost all winter. Now, I have a sneaky suspicion ODOT's responsible for those lights since... Now, I have a sneaky suspicion ODOT's responsible for those lights since it's on the bridge. I don't know for sure, but First Energy seems to drive by them all the time, so we might wanna check, because that bridge has been, the third of it's been out for almost the entire winter. I'm surprised Frank didn't mention it, but the lawsuit that the cities had against the state that was being handled in Franklin County in order to stop the state from money-grabbing from our income tax, we lost the case, the judge ruled in favor of the state, and that's only the corporate profit tax, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, and it will go to appeals.
Yeah, they did file an appeal, however, we did lose it and here we go for another money grab from the state again, especially if the appeals court upholds the regular court's decision. Got a couple questions for Mike here. I don't know if you've noticed it, but I know I've texted you several times, there has been an inordinate amount of rubbish being put out for certain properties within the city, which of course we pay for. I don't know if we should reiterate to people that we don't have an actual limit on the trash, but it just seems like a lot of people lately have been really piling it up. We might wanna consider that. And on a similar note, this last snowfall that we had, it just seemed like an awful lot of cars that got, ended up getting plowed around and it's not so much the fact that it doesn't look like a lot of them got sighted, because you usually can see the orange notice on the windows, but when the people moved their cars, now suddenly we have an entire lane for twenty or thirty feet that still has snow in it and we don't come back and replow it again. I don't know what our procedure is for going back and checking a day later to make sure that the street was clean, but that's a big inconvenience. I know the one resident on Logan had a heck of a time getting out of their driveway because the idiot was parked on the street there and got plowed around and all the snow was basically in their apron because of it. So we oughta look into something of that nature as to how we come back and resolve some of those. I don't know if it's our police department that hasn't sighted them or what's going on with that either, but the only way some of these people are gonna learn is if they do actually get a ticket, they shouldn't be on the street itself. Then it brings us back to Dominion. Washington, especially around the library and the school, Central School, still has big holes there. In fact, the library's hole, they dug on the other side that they replaced last year, dug up all the new concrete sidewalk and everything. Those holes, even though they have a snow fence around them, let's face it, there's a lot of little kids, the weather's starting to get better. I'm hoping we don't have somebody fall in one of those holes. I don't know if they've given us a timetable yet as to when they're gonna actually finish that area, because it's getting worse, not better, they're digging more holes. When they were supposed to be finished, I thought last fall originally.
Yeah, they, once they got to the one section of Union Street where they were gonna cross over, if you notice, they've been there a substantial amount of time, they were supposed to be through there almost two months ago, month and a half ago. The machine that they used to bore through there before they can ring the pipe through was actually stuck. And, you know, they're dealing with very, very old lines and other infrastructure that's under the ground, so it's caused a tremendous delay. It is why those two holes at the front of Washington, or the beginning of Washington at the library haven't been filled, because they need to get that through before they can pull all the remainder of the pipe and those are the last two connections. We thought they were gonna be through there last week, they weren't, but they made substantial progress on Thursday. There is a meeting scheduled on Friday morning here and we should have an idea as far as when that is gonna be wrapped up. I can tell you that they've already talked about, or they've requested permits and permission to start the other areas. We have not allowed that. We told them, one, they need to finish this, they need to go back and do the restoration work from this, as well as some of the other locations, as, you know, for instance, the Center Road that was talked about earlier tonight, those need to happen before we will issue permits for the other areas of town that they want to move to. So there, the contractor's under, under a timeline and Dominion's really pushing to do it, but, you know, we're not gonna budge on, on what happened two years ago where we allowed them to be operating in three areas of town, it was tough and we're not gonna do that again, and they know that.
We don't get any damages though, because they're delayed so long, or?
No, we don't have it, we don't have any damage.
I hope our engineer, who's supposedly keeping an eye on some of that stuff, a lot of the sidewalk slabs, even though they're not over where they dug, have shifted because of the work that they've done, so I hope that they actually go out and evaluate the whole area and just don't replace the dirt, put the new sidewalk in and forget about the three or four slabs you fill after it that have also moved. There, there is some significant damage to some of those tree logs and sidewalks outside of where the actual hole itself is.
What, what we did do is, we do have our staff that have gone out there, Sean Francis has gone out there during the pre-con and obviously during the project, but one of the things that we required of Dominion before they even started this was that we were to have an inspector on-site throughout, you know, every day of the project. And we have an inspector from our engineer's office who's on-site and Dominion is actually covering the cost of that inspector, so there's no cost to the city and we actually have someone at those locations, you know, representing the city. So if there's something that, you know, it doesn't look right, or if you see they're wrapping up and there's some issues with a sidewalk, let us know and we'll follow up, but hopefully you get those covered.
Because like the problem we had on Center Road, six months down the line, you pour a sidewalk on it now, it settles, are they gonna come back out, rework it? Because we still have sidewalks on Columbus Road that people rode their bikes through and wrote nasty names on, on certain sections on the south side of Columbus Road and those sidewalks were never fixed. They fixed everything on the north side of Columbus Road, but not on the south side. So I'm, I'm a little leery with Dominion and the way they're operating, it just seems like we should have some better control over that. But so be it, hopefully we can keep an eye on it. And lastly, I just wanna remind everybody that this Saturday night at two, well actually Sunday morning at 2:00 AM, don't forget to move your clocks forward. A lot of people forget that the government a few years ago switched it to March, so this is that weekend, so you don't wanna be late to church on Sunday, or maybe you do, but, actually, but it's one of those things, this weekend is the time change, so thank you.
Thank you. And I only have one item, and when I came up tonight, I noticed on the, by the doorway on the pillars of City Hall is the date 2003 and just happy, we've been in this building fifteen years now. It's hard to believe it went that fast. It's still in good shape and I wanna commend our chief maintenance guy, Tony Rabito, does a fantastic job of keeping, keeping this building up and he gave us our, give him our kudos for that and kept this building looking nice and, and looking forward into the spring when the garden club will be out here again, Joyce, and the other garden club people, they're making it look really nice out there, so. It just kinda struck me, fifteen years, wow, how time flies. And with that, no, not fifteen years ago, no, I'm retired nineteen years. It's even hurt. All right, let's move on, we got a lot of new business to take care of. Ordinance number 9568-18.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 9240-15 pertaining to chapter 13, 1301B of the Bedford Codified Ordinance, entitled Adoption of Code Title and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay, we have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the rule, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Do you read this?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Saunders, second by Mizek. Mike?
I'll just take it, may I take it? It's just basically, every year, well not every year, but every, so often that the codes change, so we have like 2011 code, so instead of changing it every couple of years, we just said the most current edition of the code will be adopted by the city, so it's just a clean up of terminology to make operations smoother and basically that's the only reason, so updating our codes.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to do it that way, instead of adopting everyone, we're always current with the state, so we don't have a conflict between codes and that makes it help and, you know, those codes for us.
Just have a couple more next week.
Good, any questions on that? Call the rule, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you, that comes to hearing the citizens, if you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comment. Seeing them?
I just have a question, I'm the ordinance that was passed there with Anovia, also Jeff from 134 Hermann. With Anovia, with payments, is that gonna have any reflection on the water payments? I mean, the fact that it takes a week for a water payment to go through if you're paying it online, we've talked about this before.
Yeah, we were looking to make that faster, but it'd be a process that had to implement, which is not cost-effective for the city right now. The effects of the recreation, I'm not sure what that would do with the company, I would assume it'd be similar in nature for the timing.
But that has nothing to do with?
No, no, nothing to do with that, no. The only way to make it faster, what I can see for the water bill right now would be to implement a check clearing process and that's a little bit more immediate, it'll allow the system to clear faster, that's what I can see right now that would help. But I'll look at it more, see if the banks have any other suggestions in regards to that, because I do notice that when I go pay my bill, there's certain ones that are a day sooner than the other ones.
Right, and a day is, a day is different than a week, you know, that's one thing.
It's a little bit a day though, and I'll look at that though.
And I just have to say Heather, every time you give a report, I feel slighted because you always cast the net over seniors saying that they're not internet savvy.
No, not all of them, it's, I actually, the most, I have to say, a lot of the people that, that come and contact me are seniors and they're doing so online, but, but I do know that a lot of seniors, I also have a lot of seniors who say, "I'm not online, I'm not gonna be online."
Just say it.
I, I, my grandfather was ninety-six years old and he, he first used the internet when he was eighty-four, and to the day he was, to the day he passed, he got online every day, so I think the internet's a great thing for seniors.
Jeff?
Thank you.
May I ask one question, the bank you're utilizing to pay your bills on, which one is it that you're?
Hello, I'm Sarah Benati and I'm actually speaking this evening on behalf of the Southeast Branch Library. I brought a few things with me, the first thing I brought, it's kinda awkward looking at you, but talking to them, is a program guide for March, April, and May, that includes programs for not only the Southeast Branch, but all of our system branches. And to highlight a few of those programs, I mean, we have things for all ages and we don't just have books. We have a weekly storytime on Wednesday evenings at 6:30 as well as 10:00 AM on Saturdays and that's for families. We also have a Monday through Thursday homework center for grades K to eight, a 1, 2, 3B program on Monday, Wednesdays after school that is for early elementary students to help them with the third grade guarantee. We also have a Friday family art experience. And we also with teens have a monthly creative writing, we have a technology program, STEM program. We also, for adults, we have a lot of technology classes that we offer, as well as book discussions and things of that nature. So all of that is highlighted in our program guide, okay? And the other thing I wanna highlight this month, it's a system line program, is March is our Food for Fines, where we're doing actually a food collection for the Harvest for Hunger for the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, in which you can submit the super six items and reduce your fines up to $4 a day. And that could be cereal, peanut butter, canned soup, vegetables, beef stew, and tuna. So you can donate as well as knock down your fines, if you don't have fines, you can still donate. And while you're in a generous mood, I encourage all of you to be friends of the library. So I brought some pamphlets to be friends of the Southeast Branch, it is $5 a year if you can spare. I do have a couple of friends on the ward here, thank you. We're looking to increase our membership, but also we're looking for advocates and supporters. And the money helps cover our local programming, so obviously we do get, you know, money from the county and we do a lot, but our local programming would be, for example, just recently we started a GED program and while we have that, we have a Children's Beyond Storytime Coin Society. So we do have active participation in that, so while adults are getting, you know, working towards their GED, we're helping engage and enrich their children. And it would help support that as well as our annual ice cream social and bringing in special performers, musical guests and things like that. So that money is money that we can really gear towards specializing in our needs for the community, so if you're interested, I will be here and I'll put out these items and, thank you.
Sarah?
Yes.
Congratulations on your new job here.
Yes, I've been there since November, I switched teams.
Will you be doing a report now or? We, we used to have Jean Safer when she was at the, she used to come all the time and give us reports and it's nice to hear what's going on.
Well, you know, I gotta keep, you know, business and personal separate, so.
I'm talking the business end.
Yes, so I'll never mix the two, but yeah, I can give reports.
I'm just, I was just saying.
Yeah, I'm looking to do some updates.
Okay, no, that's cool.
Okay.
Sarah, I have a question for you now.
Sure.
We're really gonna task you out today.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. Do you know when that building was built, or taken over as the library?
Uh, it used to be Moody. I remember it being built when I was a kid, it was in what, the nineties?
Nineties.
Ninety-one.
Okay, all right, there's your answer. Mike, Mike was worried about you, didn't he, he's about the seventies and I said, "Don't worry."
No, wait, man, it was on the seventies. Aren't we on top of the old library? I was pretty, if there's a sinkhole, you will find the library underneath yourself.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hi, my name's Diane Aspelos, I reside at 685 Archer Road, but what I wanna talk about today is a condition of a property at 78 West Grace. That yard is full of broken down furniture, there's been a box spring unwrapped, laying in that yard for at least the last four weeks. It's either up against the house or up by the porch, but it's just sitting there, it's just been an eyesore. And when I say for four weeks, I've had to be going up and down that street pretty regularly for the last four weeks and it's all been there, so needs to be looked at, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anne McPherson, I live in 22 Crestwell. I have a question. On Greencroft, there's some cars that's parked there all the time, it's three cars, and the EMS have a hard time going down sometimes. I was going down Greencroft today and the EMS was coming up with the light flash and then they had to wait just to get through. So these people that parks their cars, they have driveways, why can't they park their cars in that driveway?
Good question.
Andy, are you talking about 128 Greencroft?
Yes.
128?
See me after, okay, well, does Mike knows, yeah, that's you in our own going.
I have another question. A friend of mine called me today from the Bedford Court Surgeon, Beth Quest, and she asked me, "How many jail cells does Bedford have?" I told her, "Honey, I'm the last person to ask about a jail cell." But she said that Cleveland is closing down this workhouse and they're supposed to be sending down male criminals here to Bedford. I said, "Are you sure it's not Bedford Heights?"
Bedford Heights.
I said, "But I will ask."
The Sheriff's Department is taking over the Bedford Heights jail facility.
Okay.
But they'll be moving people, I don't know.
They're moving the mains.
I don't know who they are, but it is Bedford Heights. But the County Sheriff will be taking over their facilities.
Okay, thank you, I will let her know.
And thank you for coming, welcome to the end.
Thank you. I'm always asleep, you know.
I know. It's not bad, Kevin. If not, they have cameras.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Can I have a motion for adjournment? By Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call Rhodes, please.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thanks for coming.